Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 14th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge, please. I'd make a few announcements before we get started. The emergency accessory to your left and right on the side of the room. Restrooms are out the back and to your left. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet if you haven't already at the back of the meeting room on the table, even if you're a developer and are presenting the application. There are business cards back there with contact information for the planning department. And also on the back table is a copy of resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones. It doesn't interrupt those who are presenting before the board. And also, please all take any conversations you may wish to have amongst yourselves out the back door so that it doesn't disrupt the meeting proceedings. Thank you. First item on the agenda, meeting minutes. We have one for approval. Scott was absent. Everyone else was here for the October 8th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. So do I hear any, anything changes for Lisa?
No.
Comments?
No.
That undertake a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Al moves. Bernie seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I carried four zero with Scott absent, and he was absent from the meeting. Correspondence received. Deborah Eilich regarding Howling Hill subdivision. You should have gotten a copy of that in your packets. Board Committee updates. Dave Condon, Town Board. Happy New Year, Dave.
Happy New Year to you guys. I will take up a lot of your time tonight. You got a pretty heavy lift on your agenda, but I just wanted to, on behalf of the Town Board, I certainly want to thank you for your support, for your work, for what goes on in the Planning Board and the heavy lift that much of the town doesn't realize with the time that you guys all put in. And the Town Board certainly appreciates that, that you've signed up for another one. 2025 is here, whether we're running or not. So we're off and running, and we're doing the same. So I want to wish you continued success and good luck and have a great year.
Thanks, Dave. Are you here for the next three or four months?
I'm here. I'll probably get some coverage in February.
Okay. No worries. Good to see you. Okay, we have six items on the agenda, two of which have been removed. Item three, Crown Castle T-Mobile, that was removed until January 28th. And Nikolov subdivision discussion was also removed until the January 28th meeting. So with that, our first, ooh, sorry, almost forgot Keith. You're up, Keith.
That would have been okay. Keith Maynard, project manager from the Town of Victor. Your next Planning Board meeting after tonight is Tuesday, January 28th at 7:00 PM. There are two public hearings. The first one is Crown Castle T-Mobile, 914 Brownsville Road. Applicant is requesting approval to remove and replace antennas at existing wireless communication facility. The second public hearing is a PMD site plan modification at 727 Raleigh Road. Applicant is requesting approval for modification, modifications that were done outside of the signed PMD addition plans from 2023. And then, other than that, Stover subdivision is coming back with their preliminary application, and that is on Benson Road. Applicant is requesting acknowledgement of a complete application for the subdivision of an 11.6 acre parcel into three residential lots. This is the first step of a major subdivision and only, oh, that's from sketch. They're coming from preliminary. And then also Nikolov is going to be back for, with their preliminary application. That's Blazy Road. Applicant is requesting approval to develop 42.4 acres onto eight lots with driveways coming off of Blazy Road. And then any carryovers from tonight.
Any questions for Keith?
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Keith. Now, the first item's up on the agenda is Lightcom's field change. This project has been an approved site plan, however, there was a change due to relocate the exterior mechanical equipment location. And I'll let you explain.
Sure, sure.
Thanks.
Andrew Coleratolo from Lightcoms. I also have Bob Jacobson with me as president and CEO of the company. So nice to see everyone again in the new year. Thanks for having us back. Yes, so we have started construction on, on the 20,000 square foot building at 7321 Victor Menden Road. So as we were going through the MEP and the HVAC systems were being laid out and things like that, we were reviewing the layout with our VP of Technology, who's responsible for all the testing. And for the, for the people that aren't aware, we build, you know, fine electronics that go into satellite communication systems. And with the location of where the HVAC system was going to go, there was a very real fear that it was going to create interference with the testing that we do on the back dock. So we put in a field change request to move that to the northeast side of the building. And we totally appreciate that we want to keep that side of the building very clean for future development and the road that's going through. So we had proposed to put a, a nice looking brown fence that would kind of blend in with the landscape and the building itself around that HVAC equipment, so you wouldn't be able to see it from that side of the building. But we, you know, we, we very much need it to, to be there to, you know, it would be a bad situation if we put everything together and then it was affecting our testing. So if we can, if we can do that, that would be tremendously helpful for us.
I appreciate you coming back. I wouldn't normally have had you come back, but since this is a direct impact to the elevation of the building.
Yep.
That's, that's why we asked you. So I appreciate your.
Absolutely.
Back and effort to come back in here and talk to us about it. So I was curious personally about the size of the equipment that's going on the front of the building. And I, I believe you're talking about putting it here. Is that correct?
The, some equipment will be there for the office space. It's really the larger equipment that would be, that would be near the egress door on the south side. So kind of.
That's here?
Keep going down. Yep, around there. It was there, and that's what we want to.
Moving it around to the front?
We're moving it to the side. Yes, yep.
Okay. So nothing's going on the front then as a change?
If, because we can move, or if we can move that equipment to the, to the northeast side there, we can also put the equipment from the front there as well, because they're, they're small, they're like, they're like mini splits for the offices.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be pretty hidden, I mean inconsequential compared to the other piece.
And the preferred fencing would be, or coverage would be this brown fencing? Or, I mean.
In my opinion, just because I thought it would, it would blend. I think what we originally sent over had white fencing, but because the, the color of the building and the trees and everything surrounding, I thought the, the brown fence would look a bit nicer. But again, that's my opinion. We're happy to do whatever, whatever color we want.
Joe, questions, comments?
No.
Ron, okay?
Looks good to me.
Okay, Al?
I agree. No, no questions. I understand the need for the move. I think brown is preferred, and also looks like you're supplementing with a few plantings around.
Yep, yep.
Fence as well, so I think that further shields it, so I'm good.
Okay. Ernie?
I agree with the change in color of fence. That's the only comment I would have had anyway.
How tall is the fence relative to the equipment you're putting there?
It'll cover all of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like six feet? I'm kind of looking at it.
I, I believe so. I'd have to, I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, I, I've got no issue with the, the color, and I think brown is, would be my favorite as well, so. Wes, any comments? I assume that was just architectural, so you guys didn't have anything to worry about. So, okay. With that, I don't see a reason to avoid the inevitable. Let's put the resolution together here.
Thank you very much.
We have it, thank you. So whereas Planning Board made the following findings a fact, there are five of them, now therefore be resolved that the application of BME Associates site plan titled Lightcom's Field Change received by the Planning Board, January 3rd, 2025, Planning Board application 25FC 2024, be approved with the following conditions. Number one, that no final signatures be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid per fee reimbursement local law. Number two, ongoing conditions, site plan comply with Victor, Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, and be further resolved that Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Your motion for approval?
I'll move.
Bernie moves?
Second.
Go seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you again. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Looks like you guys are going great guns on that site over there. Lot of earth moving. Thank you. Okay. Item two, Element by Weston at Eastview Mall. Applicant is requesting approval to develop a new four-story, 23,580 square foot hotel with 123 rooms on a 91.4 acre parcel located on the west side of the mall property on an existing paved parking lot between JCPenney and the former Lord &amp; Taylor. Evening, Mr. Vars.
Good evening. My name is Peter Vars from BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of Eastview Hospitality Group, who is the applicant. With me from Eastview Hospitality Group is Dan Daly and Fred Lehman, and they'd be able to answer any questions about the operations of the hotel if you have them. So as you mentioned, we are here this evening to request site plan approval for a proposed Element by Weston Hotel to be located on the property at Eastview Mall. Eastview Hospitality Group is proposing a four-story, 123-room hotel to be located on what is known as the developer's lot, Lot 6, at Eastview Mall. If we can go to the context aerial, please, just to give you a sense of where we're at. Thank you. So the proposed hotel is located in the northwest corner of the mall property, which is in the lower left-hand corner on the aerial photo that you see up there. It is bounded to the east by the JCPenney lot, which is Lot 5 at Eastview Mall, and to the south by what is the Corad site, which is, we all know it is the Lord &amp; Taylor Lot, Lot Number 4. Lot Number 6, which is the developer's lot at Eastview Mall, totals 91.4 acres. The property at Eastview Mall, the entire mall parcel, is zone commercial. It's located within the Route 96 to 51 overlay district, and it's also located, Eastview Mall is part, also has its own mixed-use overlay district. The hotel as proposed is a permitted use per the commercial zoning, per section 211-22 of the Town Code. The total mall property is 186.8 acres, and as I mentioned, the developer's lot is 91.4 acres of that mall total. The proposed area for development is just over three acres, about 3.3 acres. It's contained totally within the developer's lot, and thus there is no subdivision proposed or required with this application. The, the development will be a, it'll be a ground lease, so there is no subdivision required or proposed. The area proposed for development currently is a parking lot, is the parking, is a parking lot area. There's no other structures or uses within that development footprint, footprint area. Eastview Mall itself, just some background, was approved as a cluster subdivision under Section 278 of Town Law and Article 5 of the Victor Town Code, first in October of 1993, and then again in 1997. The 1997 subdivision added what was known as Eastview Commons, which is the Target, Home Depot properties, to the north. When establishing the cluster subdivision approval, it did, the clustering provisions did establish certain zoning standards and bulk lot standards for the property, and that included zero-foot setbacks for interior common lot lines. It allowed for the clustering of the 35% commercial zone requirement green space to be applied over the entire mall property versus on an individual lot-by-lot basis. And it established a parking ratio at 4.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross leasable floor area. The proposed layout has been prepared to conform not only to the commercial zoning standards of the Town Code, but also the same provisions that were established with the cluster subdivision approval. If we can go to the site plan now, thank you. As you can see, the proposed hotel is an L-shaped hotel. The main entrance and the drop-off area will be to the west side of the hotel, which is the left-hand side on the rendering you see up on the screen. The, the block where the rooms are going to be housed will be along the north side, thank you, of, of the property. And then the indoor pool and the covered patio area is off the east end, south end of the hotel, so it has that southeastern exposure that is, is preferred for outdoor activity space in, in the, in our area. The existing parking area that is in this area will be reconfigured to allow for vehicular circulation from the outer ring road into the hotel site itself. As you can see on this layout, there are two primary curb cuts proposed, one at the right end or east end, and one at the western or left end to provide direct access into the hotel. It should be pointed out that currently along that same stretch where you see that darker gray area where there's two curb cuts, there are currently nine curb cuts along that ring road, because if we're all familiar, those parking aisles just go and hit the ring road. There, there's individual parking lot islands. As you can see, we're removing six of those, and thus providing two long, continuous islands, landscape buffer areas.
So Peter, just to.
Yes.
Not to interrupt your flow, but this, the parking that's existing now, right now, extends all the way up for each one of these strips, right?
Correct. That is correct, Joe.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, so yeah, those aisles you see at the bottom currently just continue northerly and intersect the outer ring road.
Okay.
As you can see on the rendering, also there's an internal sidewalk system that will be constructed to provide access from this reconfigured parking lot area that's being done to serve the hotel, to provide the pedestrian access and circulation from those parking areas to the hotel property. The circulation pattern through there, we have reviewed to be sure it can accommodate emergency vehicles, including the aerial apparatus, given the four-story proposed height, along with buses and any other large wheelbase vehicles. With the redevelopment of this area, which as we mentioned is all parking lot right now, and we actually will achieve an increase in green space on the property, this plan adds about two-thirds of an acre of green space. And so what it does, it actually takes the overall mall green space from its current 34.9% green space, it takes it up to 35.1%. So we're actually exceeding what's required by one acre, because currently a variance is in place for Eastview Mall that requires 64.63 acres of overall green space. With this redevelopment, the property will now have 65.63 acres. So we don't need any variances or relief as it relates to green space. We're actually adding the green space. The green space is in two primary components. One is around the perimeter of the hotel itself, along with the addition of some linear vertical, what I'm going to call parking lot islands. But then the main area is up at that outer ring road, which I've already mentioned. That outer ring road, that buffer ranges from a minimum width of 15 feet up to 35 feet up along the north end there. And with the landscaping that's proposed in those two areas, we're looking at adding about seven new trees, they're maple trees, along with, believe it or not, 82 low-growth shrubs. So that entire, those two green space islands along that outer ring road, it is intended for them to be robustly landscaped. Landscaping overall is illustrated, proposes a total of 27 trees and actually over 250 shrubs throughout the property. So what is now all asphalt, with, with the exception of, of a string of, of parking lot islands, is going to really take on a completely different look with green space and landscaping being added. As it relates to this project being within a parking lot, we need to walk through the parking, obviously. So currently, on the overall Eastview Mall property, the 186 acres, there's 7,427 spaces. All of these numbers are documented on the site plan and also in the engineer's report, which provides parking at a ratio of 4.9 spaces per 1,000 square feet of leasable floor space. As I mentioned, the, the property is required to provide 4.5 spaces, so which requires 68, 6,820 spaces. The hotel itself, being a new use being added, per code, the commercial, we applied the commercial zoning code, requires 144 spaces. That's based on one space per room at 123 spaces, one space per employee, which a maximum shift is six employees, plus one space for, per four persons of any general assembly areas. This hotel will have a, a bar area within the hotel per, the occupancy of that is 57 people, so at one space per floor, that requires an additional 15 spaces. So that's how we get to the 144 spaces that are required for the hotel. So when we add that to the 6,820 that is required of, because of the 1.5 million square feet of mall space, that means the required parking is now 6,964 spaces. However, the hotel itself removes parking. This redevelopment results in 316 spaces being removed. That's really what's going to get removed out of that developer's lot. So that leaves at the completion of this development, there'd just be 7,111 spaces on the mall property. That still provides 4.7 spaces per 1,000 square feet, so we're above the required 4.5. And throwing in the hotel requirement, we're about 147 spaces excess of what is required by the, the application of the code. As I mentioned, that's all spelled out on the site plan and in the engineer's report. As we mentioned, we are proposing a four-story hotel that will measure up to 59 feet tall to the top of parapet. The applicant is requesting a waiver to the 35-foot height maximum that's established within the commercial zoning district. We are requesting this a waiver through the clustering provisions of the subdivision of the approval for, that's been granted for, Eastview Mall, under Town Law Section 278 and also Article 5 of the Town Code, really following previous provisions that have been established within the Eastview Mall subdivision. The Planning Board has previously granted two height waivers for Eastview Mall, using these same provisions. First was in 2002 for the front-end expansion, PF Chang's and, and Champ's and Pottery Barn that area, that was granted a waiver up to 60 feet. And then also the Planning Board again granted a waiver for up to 60 feet when Von Maurer was built on the former Bon Ton site, again, up to 60 feet in height. So we're requesting a similar waiver for this proposed hotel for the four-story request, again, part of it being consistent with other height elements within the hotel. The 59-foot height that we're requesting is actually buffered very well from the surrounding public, so to speak, as it relates to both the existing mall itself, providing, the massing of that mall provides buffering, plus the, the distinct horizontal separation. The hotel itself is going to be set at a finished floor of about 665. That's actually 38 feet below Route 96 at the north entrance. The Route 96 at that entrance is around 703. So there's a 38-foot drop in elevation just there, plus the mall is located about, almost a half a mile off of Route 96. So you put that, that distance separation in there also. As it relates to if views from the north entrance, the Pennies Building, Pennies actually finished floor, because of the grade increase, sits about 12 feet above the proposed finished floor. So Pennies itself offers buffering to this proposed height. As if you go to the southeast, towards the south end of the mall, you have Von Maurer there that has the dome structure itself, which is up over 55 feet in height there, plus Von Maurer's finished floor is about 15 feet above the proposed hotel. What I'm getting at is that what we're proposing here is, as I mentioned, is consistent with other height elements within the mall property, as it relates to, especially over the redevelopment that's occurred in the last 20 years. But in requesting this waiver, we also think it achieves other benefits, which is really a, a key principle under the clustering provisions. And that is by allowing the 123 units being desired by the applicant, it is what works within the model, it is what works within this Element by Weston brand, is it allows us to minimize the footprint. And by minimizing the footprint, such that we're, for, for the building itself, it allows us to provide the increase in green space, to get green space around the hotel, get the larger buffer along the upper ring road versus having to spread out the footprint. And then the other thing it does by allowing us to minimize the footprint, it reduces the amount of parking that would be lost within the developer's lot if we had to go to a larger footprint. So those are what we believe are the benefits from this, by allowing us to increase green space and minimize our development footprint. The hotel will be served by water and sewer from existing onsite facilities. The sewer will tie into the existing private portion of the system that it's, that's administered by Eastview Mall. There is reciprocal easement agreements in place throughout the developer's lot for the shared services. The applicant is aware of the towns, that the fact that they have looked at the downstream, the municipal portion of the system, pump station 19, which is over by LL Bean, will need to be reconstructed. That's been identified to us since day one out here, and we understand the need that the applicant will likely need to participate in, in the reconstruction of that, of that pump station itself. The water system is a private system. It's master metered and backflowed up at Route 96, and we're able to tie into that main, but then the service that comes into the hotel, it will be sprinkled, will be, again, be backflowed within the hotel itself. As it relates to stormwater management, as we mentioned, we're actually reducing impervious cover, but Eastview Mall in and of itself is, is somewhat unique in the fact, Eastview Mall does not have a stormwater discharge. All of the stormwater on Eastview Mall goes into one of three existing stormwater ponds. In this case, you can just see it up in the upper left-hand corner. That's that large pond where the towers are, and it's between Target and, and the mall. Those are all recharge facilities. Stormwater enters those facilities and infiltrates into the ground. There is no surface discharge, therefore the project's exempt from the DEC stormwater regulations, and those ponds have been functioning since 1973. So, and so we know that they are working. And I believe La Bella, in their review letter, has confirmed the, the stormwater proposal and how we're doing this. We did, as it relates to traffic, we did provide trip generation information in the engineer's report. Hotels operate off-peak of retail establishments. A lot of their activity will be in the morning prior to the, excuse me, the mall being open, and it's more late-time arrivals at night, you know, checkout in the morning, check-in evening, so they are off-peak. But even with the trip generations, peak hour generations are below 100 trips per hour. If we're familiar with the EAF workbooks, that's below the thresholds that DEC has established within those work, workbooks as, as potential impacts on traffic. We did submit the trip generation information to the New York State DOT. We did receive an email back, which I think we have shared with the town, that the DOT determined that, and these are their words, that based on there being low volumes projected from the hotel and no new connections to Route 96, they have no concerns and have no need for any further action. as it relates to the review of the traffic. That's the DOT's position on that, as it relates to impacts from proposed traffic to the 96 or surrounding highway system. We have received the review letters from staff, Lobella, and all. We will provide written responses to those, along with whatever, along with the requested additional information. We did provide you a short-form environmental assessment form, as it is an unlisted action, and thus we would ask that the planning board does designate themselves to be lead agency. We did provide you also architectural elevations of the proposed hotel, and the gentleman from East View Hospitality Group could answer any questions about that if you have them. And if not, we can answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, Peter. Start with, on the board, Joe, questions?
So, I've got a couple. Can you talk about signage on Route 96? What are we going to see out there?
So, actually, thank you for that question. We noted the comment within the Lobella response about, because we had acknowledged about that we would do signage as a separate package, but based on the Lobella review comment, we'll come back in with a signed package as part of this application. Right now, we're not proposing any signage up at Route 96, i.e. a pylon sign or anything like that at this time.
Okay.
Okay?
And then, my second question is, I'm looking at the rendering here, and then I'm looking at the following pages, and they don't seem to jibe for me. So I wonder if you could address what the building is going to look like?
Okay, I am going to turn that over to the applicant, okay?
Sure.
Hi, everybody, Fred Lehman. What, what did you notice, Joe?
So, the actual drawings, the first one here with the front and side talks about woodlook paneling, dark woodlook paneling, light, green color, et cetera. And I'm not seeing that on this rendering. Am I missing something because it's a night shot, or?
I think you probably are. I think this is, this element is a Marriott product. This is straight out of their prototype, so it's, the colors are what they choose to use for that package, for the element. And I think there could be, you know, more information that can be provided for that. If you have specific questions, I don't specifically have that rendering in my paperwork that I have in front of me.
Okay, and I noticed, in exchange, I think it was maybe in the Lobella comments that we were looking for some more specifics, and Marriott responded that this is kind of the prototype, is how it's going to look. Am I missing something with that, Wes?
Joe, that's about right, yeah. One of the things that our architect noted was that, just as you cited in your comment, the elevation drawing and the colored rendering, the details of those don't match, right? So what we're looking, what I suspect that the planning board is looking for is maybe a little more consistent with what the Town Code is calling for, which is identified in Lobella's Comment 10 that we released today, which includes a colored rendering of the proposed project if it were to be completed on the project site, right? So we want the colored rendering to show specifically what's identified in the architectural elevations.
That can certainly be provided.
Yeah, and then...
Quick question, Wes?
Yep.
To this elevation, is this like an example of what it might look like? It's not the actual building layout and rendering of what's proposed on the plans, or is it? It looks to me like the entry is on the opposite side of the building and that sort of thing.
That would actually be, that's the south side of the building, correct?
Yeah, I was going to say, what you see to the right side?
Yeah.
That's, let me get my bearings on this.
Part of Penny's?
Yeah, I gotta do that as well.
Yes, so, right, that's the west side, because you see the porcupine for the drop-off.
Right.
So that's west side. And then what you see at the left side of that slide, that's the north-facing. That's what's facing the outer ring road.
490 Ring Road, that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So the rendering is basically prototypical from the Marriott website.
Okay.
The footprint is the way it lends itself on our property.
Sure.
So it is, it could be twisted 360.
Yeah, I'm just looking in the site plan that you had, had the porcupine on the opposite side of the building.
Yep, so it's a prototypical rendering with a drawing that lends itself to the property.
Okay.
What we'll do is with, yes, what we'll do is with regards to, because we know we have to address the Lobella comment, so we'll provide that additional information material. We'll actually create a quick little exhibit of, on the site plan, basically view sheds. You know, this is view shed AA, that's that, you know, whatever it is. So you can look at an elevation, look at the site plan, go, where am I at?
So, that may have been where Joe's going to. My comment would be related to architecture, and view shed is probably five or six different ones, like 490, for instance. I mean, there's been a lot of clearing there. You've got, I think that we'd want to see what it looks like from that elevation.
For southeast and west.
Yeah, right, pretty much. So that, and then, you know, 96 across the mall, seeing what it looks like, you know, might stick up 30 feet or 10 feet, I don't know, depending on how the building looks, you know, from 96. So, stuff like that. Joe, you can keep going.
No, that's good, that's what I was, the discussion I was hoping we would have.
Yeah.
So I'm good.
Okay. Anything else?
Just with regard to the I-490, if there's a photo simulation that would, that could be provided from I-490, the town might be interested to see how the proposed development might impact the view of the Lord &amp; Taylor site, the Lord &amp; Taylor building. It's poss, I don't know for sure. I kind of looked over my shoulder going on 490 today. It could possibly be that the hotel wouldn't impact the view of the Lord &amp; Taylor building at all. But it might be interesting if you've got a photo simulation or rendering of that regard, in that regard. Yeah.
See all those trees down?
Right.
Still gonna be able to see Lord &amp; Taylor.
Right.
Hotel farther.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I think I probably did the same thing Wes did, and was like, not watching where I'm going.
That's supposed to be doing that!
Right.
Did the same thing on the way here.
Yeah. And while, I guess, while we have the rendering, the photo simulation, understanding this is just the prototype. One of the comments that I had in my letter was about the lighting in this particular depiction. So there's this, what appears to be this lighting band up near the roof line, and then also a lighting band that's maybe at the top of the first floor. And I'm not, basically, I just wanted to call that to the planning board's attention, if that's something that you're okay with. We might also want to see how that, if it even affects the illumination contours. My guess is that if it does, it's probably very minimal. Is that the type of, is that the type of thing you want to see?
I think we should, yes. Yeah, so if you're doing renderings, you might even look to do maybe a night rendering from one or two of those perspectives, just to see what that lighting would do in the parking area.
And actually, I do recall, that's what we did with Von Maurer, too. Because we all are familiar how Von Maurer lights their dome, I call it. But we did the very similar thing, so people understood what that would look like at night.
Oh, I think that we, as a board and the public, I'm sure would be interested in seeing how that impacts the lighting overall in the site.
Again, I think what you're looking at is a very prototypical Marriott rendering that wasn't, good questions, and wasn't really, you know, portrayed on the...
So I presume several of the higher lighting, higher massed lightings units in the area would have to come, go away. Are you looking to keep tall lighting fixtures close to the hotel? Or are you going to go to shorter ones that would illuminate the parking in the immediate vicinity of the hotel?
Correct, so I think there's three or four current, like, the tall ones, that have to get relocated out. I think one's actually getting relocated, the other three are gone because of that. And then the proposed lighting, I know is not that, but I don't, it's on the plans. I don't know off the top of my head what we're proposing, but I think it's maybe the 24, 28-foot.
Yeah, if you go to Walmart, for instance, those are all 25-footers, that whole parking area. These are 50 or 40?
I think they're 40s, if I remember.
They're pretty tall.
Because, I remember, we had to get variances for those to at some point.
The existing parking lighting that's out there will have to be modified because it's going to come up, because it's in the building footprint. And then the lighting that'll go around the building will be shorter than the old stuff that was taken care of, massive asphalt area.
Are those all new lights, right, in that vicinity?
Yeah, it'll all be new, and confirmed it is, they're 24-foot poles.
Okay.
LED, dark sky compliant fixtures.
Okay.
And, but I do acknowledge the Lobella comment. We have the photometrics of that, but we do need to overlay them with the existing photometrics of the mall, just to...
Sure.
That does.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
I'm all set, thank you.
No? No, nothing at this time. Ernie?
When I first saw this, I was a little concerned, but the more I see it, the better I feel about it. So if we can get our questions answered, I think we might have a better go of it.
Perfect.
I guess the question I have is, concerns Lord &amp; Taylor. You're consuming parking around Lord &amp; Taylor with this project. Does that affect Lord &amp; Taylor or whoever goes in there at some point in the future? Is that going to handicap them at all?
So there's two answers to that, Scott?
Two?
Yes. One is, as I spelled out, as it relates to the overall mall, we meet the parking requirements. But as we all know with malls, there's two parking arrangements. There is the code requirement, applying the code. But also because of the subdivision of the mall and the creating of the anchor parcels, there is the reciprocal easement agreement plan, the REA plan. Point being is, each of those lots, Corad, Lord &amp; Taylor, JCPenney, Dick's, Sears, and Macy's, they have their own parking requirements, because they're required to provide their parking for their store on their lot, okay?
Okay.
So the point being is, all of this redevelopment is done completely within the developer's lot. We're not disturbing any parking on the Lord &amp; Taylor lot. So the parking that's been allocated to the Lord &amp; Taylor building parcel, going back to its redevelopment in '93, is still there after this development.
Okay, that's a good answer.
I think I'm going to be a little contrarian on that answer. And if Suzie could bring up the site plan, and I might be misinterpreting it. But I'm looking at, yes, thank you, this is the property line, correct? Kind of zigs and zags through here?
It's zigs and zags, yes.
So it looks to me like all of the darker gray area is going to be inclusive of all the parking attributable to the new hotel proposal? Is that true? In other words, this parking here, is that part of the hotel parking spaces?
No, no. If you go to the site plan, this is artistic rendering, the site plan has it shown what's been allocated for the hotel, to show that it's all within the developer's parcel.
Yeah, because I looked at this and said, well, here's the edge of the hotel. Here's all this parking, which is on the Lord &amp; Taylor site, not on the mall property. So I was looking at that and saying, well, if people are going to be at the hotel, they're definitely going to park there. Whether or not it's part of the 100, I forget how many spaces you said.
True, but that's how it is at the mall in itself. That's why the reciprocal easement agreements are in place, obviously.
When you say reciprocal easements, you mean people can park across lots and...
That's right, exactly. That you can park at, you can park in the Macy's lot and go to Dick's. Or you can park in the Von Maurer lot and go to LL Bean. They all share the right that, and one can't restrict their parking to their customers only.
Sure, and, but I'm looking at this thing, if you moved a lot of the spaces away from the Lord &amp; Taylor site proper to put in the driveline around the perimeter, so I'm trying to, how to put this?
I think Peter's saying those aren't the actual property lines.
Well, actually, I think these are the property lines.
Those are the property lines, but we've maintained the parking on the Lord &amp; Taylor site.
Okay, so they have enough parking to meet their needs for the site? I'm just looking at this, sort of, you're invading this Lord &amp; Taylor site with this modification.
Right.
So, and we were asked to...
And that's the review with Wilmerite, because they are the, I don't want to say it, the gatekeeper of the REA, right? They have to get everybody to sign off on all of that.
Just thinking of the last application we had with Chick-fil-A?
Yes.
And the Macy's lot, okay? I mean, we were asked to avoid touching parking on the Macy's lot. So this, in this case, you're not avoiding touching that. It sounds like, I mean, certainly Wilmerite's got control of the whole site, but...
So what we'll do is part of, because we're going to be resubmitting information, we'll provide clarification on that, of the fact of the REA, what it does, and how everybody is still getting their, the parking they have been, I don't know, promised isn't the right word, but the parking that's been allocated for them, that they still have.
Okay, and I guess whoever's controlling the Lord &amp; Taylor site acknowledges that, I guess? I mean, they would have to, I don't know, Frank, maybe you would have a insight on...
Peter, my question is...
Frank, maybe, why don't you go to the mic? Frank, thanks.
Yep.
The question I have, Peter, is Frank Fabia, town attorney. Your rendering shows the parking that you are to be provided, or proposed to be provided to the hotel, but not all the parking within the darker shade is actually the parking that would be for the hotel. You're just showing how the parking is going to be readjusted in the areas north of the property line.
Correct. So, as we talked about, these parking aisles now all run straight north. This is the property line. So while this reconfiguration here for circulation does eliminate certain number of parking spaces on the Lord &amp; Taylor site, they are picked up by introduction of these spaces. That gets back to that known net, because that was very important. You know, Wilmerite made that very clear, we can't have a loss of parking.
And I assume that's because, as you mentioned, they are the gatekeeper of the REAs. And they wanted to ensure that the REA that would serve whoever the future user of what is now the vacant building, the Lord &amp; Taylor property, knows that under the REA, they have all the spaces that the REA promises them.
Exactly.
And then lastly, nothing prevents a visitor of East View Mall to park in the parking that you're showing for the hotel and walking into the mall.
Correct, correct.
Just as you had mentioned earlier, these REAs are really designed and acknowledged in Chick-fil-A. That might have been a unique situation, Joe, because of where it was located. And Macy's is open and is active. But these REAs are really to ensure that, yeah, there's an allocated amount of spaces for the anchor stores. But they also understand that it's a reciprocal easement, that visitors and customers of other stores still can park there, and they're not necessarily going to Lord &amp; Taylor or Macy's or whatever. So that, you're saying that this proposal won't adversely impact those REAs?
That's correct.
So they wouldn't be able to sign it and saying, parking for hotel guests only in the interior of that REA?
Well, I need to be careful. The REA currently does not allow for that.
Okay.
Okay.
I could just imagine in holiday time, there's a spot in the area of the hotel that's really close to an entry that otherwise you'd park in the hinterlands.
Yeah.
You know?
Right, it's a valid concern. It is.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, Scott, anything else?
No, I think you hit on my question a little further than I did. The only other comment I have is, I think I'd like to see a simulation from 96 as well as from 490.
Yep, we'll do north, southeast, west, so 96, 490, and north and south, yes.
Yeah, it'll give us a good idea of scale of the building relative to Lord &amp; Taylor, that whole area.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
What is this Corad lot?
That's the Lord &amp; Taylor lot. Corad was just the entity when it was established in, okay. Lord &amp; Taylor was '98, I believe, so...
Before, I think. Okay. Wes, we've had some discussions about the sanitary lines and water supply and things like that. So I don't know if you want to address any of the concerns that...
Yeah, I can just reiterate a bit what the applicant's representative has stated with regard... I can just reiterate some of what the applicant has, applicant's representative has stated with PS-19. I'll share my screen. Suzie, could you switch screens? Thank you. So this is a, this is a map of the town sanitary sewer map in the vicinity of East View Mall. East View Mall is right in this location, and you can see the label PS-19. So this particular pump... So this particular pump station here is kind of between the, the existing movie theater and the LL Bean retail store in this vicinity, and it, it pumps up towards Route 96, which eventually discharges to PS-18. So in addition to evaluating pump station 19, La Bella is also looking at the downstream pump stations, including, uh, PS-18, and if we continued on towards the wastewater treatment plant, um, we would see that eventually PS-14, that, that's also a, a, a pump station we're evaluating. So, um, PS-19, we know, we know today that the, the wet well that's located at PS-19 really is undersized and, and really has little to no, um, emergency capacity if there were, e, even with just today's existing development. So, uh, the proposed development would, would really inundate PS-19 and, and it needs to be replaced in its entirety. Um, I'm not exactly sure when it was installed, early 1970s, I would, I would guess?
No.
No?
So that pump station was installed in 93, 'cause it was installed as part of Cobblestone Creek. 'Cause Cobble, Cobblestone Creek brought the sewer up from, uh, the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
And so Eastview Mall up until that time was on septic. It would, they were, there was a field of seepage pits in where Lord &amp; Taylor is today. And so when Cobblestone was constructed, Wilmerite then extended the sewer.
Got it.
To Eastview to take, 'cause they knew they were proposing the Lord &amp; Taylor expansion, was to take it off, 'cause that was going to eliminate the septic field, and so it was a combination sewer plan between Cobblestone and the Eastview Mall expansion.
You're talking about Cobblestone Court?
Cobblestone Creek Golf Course.
Of course, oh, that's, I heard that, and I wasn't sure if that's really what you meant.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I'll give you a little history.
Okay.
So when, this is just anecdotal, but it's a great story. When that was built, so the sewer was in, it was not live yet, Cobblestone Creek was getting ready to open, but they didn't have any water in their irrigation ponds, so they pumped water from the recharge ponds at Eastview through that sewer system and put it into the irrigation ponds. So it was all clean water, just to fill the irrigation ponds at Cobblestone.
Before they decided.
Before they decided to convert it to sewer, sanitary.
Interesting.
But yes, that's what they did.
Yeah, okay.
That's very interesting.
Learn something.
Very nice.
All right, dual function.
So, uh, as we look at this map, the, the proposed development is over in this, this corner. I don't know if you can see my cursor there.
There, that's right there.
So, uh, in, initially, the, the sanitary sewer is going to go gravity in this location towards, towards what you see as PS-20, but it's not going to go all that, all that direction. It's going to, there's a private pump station located about this lo, about in this area, right? And that private pump station, if I'm correct, Peter, you, let me know if I'm wrong, pumps to PS nine, uh, wet well, or pumps to PS-19.
Yeah, well, it pumps up to JCPenney, and then there's a private gra, uh, gravity system that drains to PS-19.
Got it.
Yep.
All right. So, um, our, our preliminary findings of the downstream pump stations is that they likely do have capacity for the proposed development. PS-19 does not. Likely PS-18 and PS-14 do have capacity. We're continuing to, uh, run some calculations there. Uh, the one thing to know, however, is that when the updated PS-18 was installed and updated PS-14 as part of the Auburn Trail Sewer Project, which was installed 2018, 2019, and is operational now, um, those pump state, we didn't, we didn't know that this particular project was going to be coming. So that's going to consume some additional capacity in PS-18 and, and PS-14 that wasn't anticipated. Um, so that's just something to kind of keep in the back of our, back of our minds. Um, I think that's all I have on, on sanitary, on sanitary sewer.
So do they need to upgrade the internal pump station?
That's, we're working with Wilmerite on that, yes.
Okay, so the private one over towards Target is where I'm, what I'm referring to.
Right.
Not 19, which is Town.
Correct, but.
There's another one, you said this was 27, was it?
Uh, PS-20 up here. That has nothing to do, yeah, that, that will not be impacted by this project.
Seems like such a short run that you could just put a pipe there, but obviously you're taking advantage of what's in the ground already.
Yeah.
Peter's like, what?
Yeah, no, I know, I'm trying to remember why PS-20 was installed, but that's why I can't remember.
I don't know what feeds it.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, that's it. Suzie can switch back if, if you want.
The bottom line is if you don't, you don't need to touch the internal one, or at least you don't think so, from all of this, I mean, that's a lot of water.
Yeah, so La Bella has made that comment, that they do want that verification, so we will provide that. Uh, we, we have obviously calculated our demand, our flows. We're getting information from Wilmerite on that station, what's in there, and so we can run the, run the analysis. Yep.
All right. Um, anything else, Wes, that you can think of? I mean, that was a big one, you know?
Uh, I, you know, we, we've got our January 14th, 2025 letter here. The applicant has a copy of it. Um, we've talked about a lot of the content of, of what's in the letter already, so I don't think I have anything else.
Okay. Um, this is a public hearing. Um, I would open up the floor to the public. If there's anyone here that might have a question or is curious about something they've seen, and the developer's here, and Wilmerite's here, so I will not close the public hearing until we get more information. So with that, um, anyone else have any comments that they would like to have the applicant consider? So what I'm hearing here is obviously some engineering challenges and questions that need to be answered, and La Bella's covered that pretty well. And then architecturally and view shed wise, it sounds like the next step for us, at least to evaluate the building on site and the site, that the elevation changes are, the simulation, photo simulations from at least four sites, uh, view sheds. And I could think we'd like to see that night and day, uh, just to understand the impacts of lighting of the particular, you know, eve.
It's interesting to see what the trade-off is by taking those big poles out and bringing in the shorter poles and the up.
Yeah, it'd actually be nice to see a little bit of a darker view.
Right.
Unless you put so much light up on the top, eve, that, that changes that whole issue, so I wouldn't want to be underneath that sleeping, so anyways, but we'll see. So thank you for that.
Very good.
Okay? All right. Uh, again, seeing no comment or question from the public, we'll move on to the next items.
Thank you.
We'll stay open. Uh, Bell Atlantic Verizon Wireless, this is at Cobblestone Court. Applicants requesting approval to upgrade antennas on existing wireless telecommunications facility on the roof of the existing building, which we've seen happen two or three times at least, so, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Laura Smith. I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody. I'm here with Cheryl Schultz of Aerosmith Development, and together we represent Verizon Wireless. As you noted, this is a modification of existing telecommunications facilities, um, at 200 Cobblestone Court Drive. Uh, it's up at the top of the building along the frieze in the parapet, uh, towards the corner of the building. This modification is necessary in order to maintain the adequate and reliable wireless telecommunication services, uh, within that cobblestone cell. Um, and as a modification of existing telecommunications facilities, um, this particular modification is governed by Section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, also known as the Spectrum Act, um, which, uh, looks to, um, encourage modifications when necessary to, uh, maintain the, the health of the cell. Um, in addition to compliance with 640, 6409, uh, this application is also in compliance with the special use criteria set forth in Town Code 211-47C4. I'm happy to go through that, uh, those elements of our application, or, um, pause to take questions on the application that was submitted.
Um, again, we've seen this a number of times happen on this particular building and other sites around the site, so I guess I expect the board knows most of what you would be presenting, unless there's somebody that has something specific, but, um, I'll just open up for comment and see where we go with it. So, um, Joe, questions?
It's a one-for-one swap on the antennas?
It, it is, I believe it's a, maybe a, a two-to-three swap on the antennas, um, but the, the, um, aesthetics will be similar to what's currently located on the.
They're going to look the same, they're going to, very good, that's all I've got.
Okay. Scott?
No, I don't have anything. I mean, I've, I've seen those there, and I, I guess you might be adding a few more then based on what you're saying, correct?
You said three for two, is that right?
Three, three for two, um, and, and it's in very specific locations along the building. Joe, if you want to give comment?
Yeah, you need to come up.
Some of the newer technology calls for stacked antennas, they are smaller, um...
I'll just need your name for the record, so Lisa gets.
Cheryl Schultz from Aerosmith Development.
Thank you.
Uh, so looking at the new design, the overall count of antennas is slightly higher, uh, but they are actually smaller in size.
That was going to be my question. Um, Al, any?
And, uh, in terms of color and appearance, about the same as what we have there now?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Ernie? Um, regarding color, uh, in the past, we've requested that those paddles be painted in striping to meet the color directly behind that portion of the panel, paddle. Right now, I think they're tan, which is what shows up there, and I think that, that was a request on the previous, um, requirement or, uh, request. So, um, if you could, I'd note that that's what needs to be done there. I think it's going to be also on the resolution, um, yeah, so Lisa has that too, but that would be my only comment as well.
Thank you, and that is noted in the application itself on sheet C2.
Okay.
That the antennas will be painted to match the building behind.
All right. Um, open up for the public, anyone have any questions for the applicant? I think this is a public hearing. Seeing none or hearing none from our public, Dave's like, no questions. Um, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
So moves. I'm sorry. Scott, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing's closed. Um, Wes, any comments?
Yeah, we did, La Bella did issue a comment letter dated, uh, January 13th, and we did note that many of the proposed site changes would appear to be taking place behind the parapet wall, out of sight from the public view, but there are some, uh, a few changes to the antenna array as the applicant's representative described. Uh, and there's also a note on a plan sheet indicate that the proposed, indicating that the proposed antennas, equipment and cabling that's visible from the exterior shall be painted with, uh, painted to blend with the existing building facade and the roof. Um, the only, we also noted that, uh, we would probably characterize this as an unlisted action, and, uh, there is a structural analysis report that's also provided in this, in the submission. Um, and just the last comment, we were looking for a signature block on the, on the site plan drawings, but, uh, Nixon always does a nice job putting together the application packages, so, uh, really don't have anything beyond that.
Okay. Uh, with that, unless you have anything else for us, we're going to read the resolution and...
Just a follow-up note on the site plan with the signature blocks. Would you like 12 copies with the signature blocks on it or a lower?
Ask her.
I can get with you tomorrow with email, and as long as comments are satisfied, then I'll let you know to submit, but one.
Fantastic, thank you.
My hand gets tired signing when, anyway. Okay, so we do have a resolution for this one. Copy's on the back in case anyone's interested. Uh, for, uh, Bell Atlantic DBA Verizon Wireless, 200 Cobblestone Court, application 32 SB 2024 and 8 SU 2024. Whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there's 10 of them. Um, number 10, La Bella Associates reviewed the site plan application on January 14th and provided comments, as Wes noted. Uh, whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on January 14th, 2025, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be resolved that the project Bell Atlantic DBA Verizon Wireless will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Excuse me. Now therefore be resolved that the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems of Allentown DBA Verizon Wireless, uh, application 32 SB 2024 and special use application 8 SU 2024 be approved with the following conditions. Uh, number one is standard, number two is standard, number three, that the color match and, that the color matched the banding color pattern behind the panels, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with that resolution, do you hear a motion for approval?
Move.
Any moves?
Second.
And Scott's second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, Aladdin's Natural Eatery Site Plan Modification, 8053 State Route 96. Owner Newcom Properties, applicants requesting for a site plan modification to allow exterior seating by retrofitting the existing landscaped area on the east side of the building. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is John August. I'm a partner in Victor Hill Commons, located at 8053 Pittsburgh Victor Road. Uh, this was approved by the Town of Victor and built in 2005, just 20 years ago, and it was originally approved for an Atlanta Bread restaurant. Atlanta Bread went bankrupt shortly before occupancy and never opened, we never opened this as a restaurant, it's been used to retail up until now. Metro Mattress, as you know, recently moved out after a 20-year stay in the center on the end cap, and we are very fortunate to have it now under lease to Aladdin's Restaurant to add another restaurant to their holdings. Sammy Mina is here, the owner, and he'll be able to answer questions after, I'm just going to go through a few things, uh, but we're here tonight, as you said, to request a site plan modification to add limited outside seating, 12 seats, uh, for seasonal outside dining. We're proposing to remove two small landscape areas next to the building to create a small seating area approximately 350 feet. Uh, we submitted plans, got comments from the town, addressed those, and just today got another series of comments. I'm just going to walk through those very briefly, one by one. Number one, we were asked to expand the sidewalk to five foot, that was taken care of in the new plan. We added boughs to protect the outside seating from the handicapped spots. We received a notice this afternoon that the boughs that were, I believe, submitted are not up to the fire code, so we will commit to meeting with the fire department and do whatever they need to replace those boughs with, uh, something that meets the code. With this removal of some landscaping, the 350 feet of green, uh, we still make the green belt requirement barely, 35.2%. I have a table that I dropped off today that just shows the calculation of the green belt, adding the 350 feet to the impervious calculation from our 2005 application. Uh, we removed the proposed sconces off the plan, that we know they have to be dark sky compliant, we're just looking at what they're going to tie into the rest of the building. They'd like to come back and get those approved at a later date, the final sconces that are chosen, so we've removed those, any new sconces from the plan. Next signage, uh, there was just a note, number five, that the required, permits are required for all work, including signage, that's acknowledged by the applicant. Last, number six was parking. We have 70 seats with this restaurant, inclusive of the 12 seats outside, and the 67 parking spots that are on the site now meet the requirement. That's five, um, parking spots per thousand on the retail, and I believe it's one per two seats in the restaurant plus a staff, a seating for every, seat for every staff, a parking space for every staff member. They meet that right on the button, uh, with the 70 seats in this and the rest of the space being retail. There was a, a note in the notes that we could seek a parking reduction per new codes that weren't in place 20 years ago. We're, we're not asking that, there's no need for any relief in the parking code, and we added the signature block as requested. Um, we think that addresses the town comments with the exception of the boughs, and, uh, Sammy and I will answer any questions you have about the operation, and with that, we respectfully, uh, request your approval for this extra outside seating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sammy, do you want to come up here and introduce yourself, if they have any questions for you?
Sammy Mina, owner operator of Aladdin's Natural Eatery.
Good evening, welcome. I'm going to open up to the board, and they may have questions for either of you, so. Al, we'll start on your end.
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, Bernie?
You're sitting forward, it's nice to have something talk about there.
Okay. Al?
Yeah, I agree with Joe's comments, and also again, to make sure the, you know, boughards are meat-coated, make sure there's no safety issues, but otherwise, I'm happy to see you come into the area.
And Joe?
My wife is thrilled at Aladdin.
It is nice to see another casual eatery coming into town, so. Not too much objection from the board, obviously. Wes, any comments you'd like to address?
We did issue a letter dated December 26, 2024. I think the applicant has addressed all of our comments, at least, yeah, all of LaBella's comments, so I don't have any further concerns at this point. I think that if the planning board is willing, there could probably be some conditions attached to a resolution, if you want to go that route. So I don't have anything, I don't have anything further.
Yeah, I think we could make sure that several of the things that were mentioned regarding sconces, for instance, that uncovering the design of the boughards, I believe, are the two outstanding items that would be most critical, that we could have those noted, and Wes, I guess, for LaBella's review when the drawings come in.
Yeah, as far, also, I guess with regard to the lighting, the wall sconces, I don't know if you really want to see, as a planning board, do you want to see an application come back to you for wall sconces on a building, or do you just want, is that something you want to just refer to the code enforcement office, and to just be sure that they're code compliant?
I'll frame my comment a little differently. I think the question to the applicant is, what is the lighting plan for seating outside? Is it just the sconces? Did you hear?
It's planned to be the sconces, we're trying to match the existing, they were older design, we're trying to find something that blends that is dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
We haven't yet picked a fixture, outside seating, as much as I think Sammy would like to be open early spring, the outside seating will try on that.
Okay.
Late spring, so we love to work with staff and present a plan that was approved, or active plan over and over.
Yeah, I think, I think the code is pretty clear about, you know, downward, downlighting rather than up and downlighting on sconces, for instance, that we've had that question on many other, mostly restaurant applications, but if that's how you're lighting the area and you're using sconces on the building, as long as they comply with code, dark sky, I think we can make that a condition of approval with LaBella's review.
Would you want that as prior to a CLO?
In a.
For their building permit?
I think we need to know what the sconces would be before we can give them a building permit, I would think.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Because otherwise, you get to the opening, it's like, I gotta go find a fitting, a fixture, and so it's in your best interest to find it quickly.
Do we stretch the outside seating until that's approved, the lighting until that's approved? Could already have a building permit, or starting an interior?
Oh, well, interior, yeah, it's not a big deal. I suppose we could do that, I don't know, that's a board feeling.
Well, basically, no exterior lighting can be installed until it's reviewed and approved.
Right, and then so the exterior seating is what is suggesting be kept posed until that happens.
Or at least in the evening hours.
Yeah, well, true. How much do you want?
Separate permit for lighting?
Well, separate permit for the whole outside seating, including lighting.
They don't need a permit?
Yeah, but can we have, do you want?
Yeah, we can require that.
We don't need to see that, then?
No.
Right? I'm just trying to make sure we clarify that.
Yeah, we can discuss with code, but yeah, if you want to do it for Tom's staff.
Yeah, I'd see we're not, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Code enforcement does a good job of that. Okay, so, public hearing, anyone in the public have any comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Joe. Al seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed, we do have a resolution, let's work through it, if there's any special conditions. Probably need something addressed prior to my signature, or ongoing condition perhaps for the lighting. Want to try to work that through while I'm going through this? All right. Wes is on it. And with my glasses. Aladdin's Resolution, Aladdin's Natural Eatery Site Plan Modification, Application 34 SB 2024, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, there are eight of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board waives the requirement that the site plan be prepared by a licensed professional engineer, as the proposed improvements are small in scale and involve only minimal ground disturbance where access drives, utilities, and overall site grading will be unaffected, and whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on January 14, 2025, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project, Aladdin's Natural Eatery Site Plan Modification, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Sammy Mina, I'll make sure I get the name right, 14 Cathedral Oaks, Fairport, New York, Site Plan Modification, Aladdin's Natural Eatery Site Plan Modification, received by the Planning Board December 10, 2024, Planning Board Site Plan Application Number 34 SB 2024, be approved with the following conditions. Number one, conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid. Number two, comments in the letter dated December 23, 2024 from LaBella Associates be addressed. Number three, that the comments in the letter dated December 18, 2024 from Code Enforcement Office are be addressed. Ongoing conditions, one, that the site plan comply with Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Wes?
Can we add January 14 to the code?
The number three?
Yep.
December 18 and?
And January 14, 2025. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. These are?
Yeah.
And wall sconces were addressed as a question in that. So ongoing conditions, is that what you're looking at, Wes, is doing a second?
Yeah, I did a second ongoing condition there. That any building-mounted lighting modifications be submitted for administrative review by the code enforcement office. So the timing of which, I don't know if that really matters, right? So for example, if they wanted to, if they wanted to open without having any outdoor building-mounted lighting, you know, they could do that, they could certainly have occupants out, outside eating during daytime, and for some reason, they're not able to see, you know, during the dark.
There are six scatces on that wall now, they're going to supplement them, there's some thrown off, this is way up against.
Okay. That was why I was suggesting a separate building permit for that, that way they could get a CBO on their existing building permit.
Okay.
And then it just gives us a way to track this lighting without having it to go back as a site plan modification to you guys.
Are you okay with the wording that I just described here, or did you want to add?
I would specifically say that they need to get a separate building permit for the lighting, you know, address what you said, but in the form of a building permit.
Okay. Okay, so that any building-mounted lighting modifications be submitted for administrative review by the code enforcement office under a separate building permit application?
Perfect.
Yeah, that's just more of a tracking for us.
Yeah, it's just more of a track, and then you don't have to come back here, and you can get your CBO without.
Thanks, Keith. That works. So with that, and Wes will give it to Lisa afterwards, be it further resolved, Planning Board Secretary distribute the appropriate standard conditions with the Planning Board's approval letter. Move. Moves? Bernie seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Harry 5-0?
Thank you very much, and I see you're saying, it's very helpful.
Okay, great, and welcome to Victor.
Appreciate it.
Looking forward to it. I believe that's everything, Wes, do you have any things that administratively we need to deal with?
Nope, I think our next meeting, we might have a project report at the end of January.
I asked Lisa in one of our staff meetings if we could get a spreadsheet that can be regularly updated as to the status of outstanding projects under construction?
It's on my calendar.
Okay, so, thank you, Keith. That'll just give you guys an opportunity to see what's out there, what's expired, and what's moving forward, so. I always ask myself, what's going on with this project that we approved five years ago or something, and it's hard to keep track of, so I appreciate the staff, Keith and Lisa, you guys taking care of that.
I agree.
We're thinking like twice a year.
Right.
That's not Victor, no, that's not Victor.
No, it's like Amsterdam or something. Yeah, I think.
I think that's all we have administrative.
Yeah, right, that'll be the hotel, a moat around it. Yeah, okay.
Look, there's a Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, right, okay, I think we need to adjourn this meeting.
Yes, you do.
Al in favor?
Bernie.
Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Thank you.